If I could have your attention, is this going? Can you hear me? Hi. It must not be working because my wife is not listening. Hello, hello?
There we go.
Is it working? Now if I touch any chords, the world will come to you. I hope this microphone sounds loud enough so you can hear. We're trying to work on that. Welcome you out tonight, and I need to start this meeting by giving an apology. The legislators from, and I'll introduce them, Val Potters here, Dan Johnson's here, where's Casey Snyder's here, Senator Scott Sandals here, all representing legislators. We met just shortly after the session ended and decided we want to have these monthly town hall meetings. And so as we thought about what we could talk about that would be of interest to people in the Valley, the first thing that came up was the sales tax issue because that was pretty prominent. And at the end of the session, we ended up doing a, creating a task force that as you listen to the end of the session, would be in place within a week. And the governor hoped to have a special session by the 1st of July on all the changes. And if you saw the paper, I was quoted and I said, "That's not very realistic." And it wasn't. And so, we thought we'd have it. I thought when we did it now in May, the task force would be either done or nearly done, and there'd be a lot of publicity about it. Well, as you may know, the task force, the membership was appointed last week. I was asked to chair the Senate, and we have four other senators, three Republicans, and let's see, and one Democrat. And the House has four Republicans and one Democrat. And we're actually going to meet tomorrow morning, the leadership, to outline what we hope to be eight town hall meetings within the next three weeks, which is really a busy time for everyone with vacations and holidays and stuff working in together. I can assure you, there'll be no special session by the 1st of July. And I think as we get into this tonight, you'll see this. Now, I'm saying this because I had planned just to do this town hall meeting as we normally do, and then, as I get now in that leadership position, and in fact Jonathan Ball and I met together this morning at 8:00. I left the Senate, or the Capitol about 4:30, 4:35, and drove like crazy to get back here. So we've been in the Capitol, as well as other legislators, it's interim day today. So it's been kind of a ragged day to get up here and get it done. But let me tell you, let me also tell you, some of the people that are here, you should know. Jonathan Ball is our fiscal analyst, and he's in charge of all the budget in the state of Utah. He is the one, or his staff, tell us how much revenue we can expect from things, how much loss we'll have, how much, and one of the most difficult things is they tell us in December, how much money we're going to have the next July to the next January. And he's helped by Dr. Wilco, Andrea, why don't you stand up? She works for him, and she's, yeah, stand up Andrea. I didn't see if Dr. Thomas is here, he's not here. We have also a number of our legislative staff. So in the legislature, our staff are either nonpartisan or bipartisan, whatever you want to call them, because they don't work for the Republicans or the Democrats, they work for the legislature. We have the fiscal analyst office, and their job is to give us fiscal information. When I file a bill, and I'm going to do a certain thing with it, then they come back and say, "That'll have no fiscal impact on the state," or "It will cost us $2 million," or "It'll raise $20 million," whatever it may be. So when we vote, we know as we work the budget. Utah is really dead serious on having a balanced budget. I am told we're the only state in the Union that has never lost our AAA bond rating. There are nine of us now, right now. And what it means, Steve Norton will tell you, that when Cache County issues a bond now, they get AAA bond rating and saves them much, much money. I should also introduce Joel Ferry. Joel lives in Tremonton, and he represents the Clarkston, Newton, and Cornish area of Cache Valley. We're glad to have him, he's a new member of the House over there. So, we have that now. I want to also indicate, we have legal counsel here with us too. The other part is legislative research. And so if I have an issue or question, I go to legislative research and say, "Here is an issue." They draft a bill for me, they come back and say, "It's got constitutional issues," or whatever it may be, and they work. Now, the head of that is John Cannon, he's not here. But the number one attorney is John Fellows. John? I'm going to have John introduce the members of his staff that are here. Some are lawyers, maybe you've got non-lawyers, but we have either lawyers or people with master's degree in public administration. So we have well-qualified people. John himself is a lawyer, and why don't you introduce your staff that are here?
Sure. Thank you Senator. As Senator Hilliard mentioned, there's really four legs to legislative staff services that are provided by the legislature. And as you mentioned, we're all nonpartisan. So there's fiscal, you met John and Andrea, legal, policy, and audit. And the auditors do their own kind of thing, and they're not usually, they look after the fact that how well government implemented whatever it is the legislature passed. So our particular office is composed of both legal and policy. And we have two people here. Brian is, stand up Brian please. Brian's the policy analyst for Tax, so he's been the one, in conjunction with Jonathan and Andrea, who's been running all kinds of different scenarios and what the impact of a particular adjustment to the sales tax, or property tax, or whatever might do not only on individuals, but on the economy. And Christine Gilbert is the attorney assigned to Tax. Commiserate with her because she will be the one who has to put together, take the concepts that the legislators decide on, and translate that into actual legal language that goes in the code and can be interpreted and implemented. So that's the staff that you've got here supporting you.
One thing I'm going to try to do is, we're going to start the meeting out by Jonathan Ball, talking about why we're doing what we're trying to do. I've been to five of the town, or not town hall, the meetings they've had at the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce, where they brought in different groups to explain what House Bill 441 was. And it had a lot of publicity about it because of sales tax on services, and how that went from there. And it was pretty common, the two responses I heard from every group, "What are you doing? You've got $1.3 billion of surplus, and now you want to raise taxes on service? What are you doing?" And the other question really was, "I don't want my taxes raised." And so we're going to talk about the issue we have, and what we're trying to do to resolve it. Now, Val's sitting up here with notepads, and if you have any questions, write them up. One of the concerns I have in a town hall meeting is we end up with people lobbying us, or doing that, and telling us, "Well, you can't do this or that." We're more than happy to visit with you after the meeting. But we want this meeting to be primarily information. So Jonathan Ball is going to explain to you the problem we face, why we're trying to do what we're doing. I'm going to talk about a number of the different options on the table. Now, I'm doing this with this clear proviso. I am not recommending any of them. And there's none of them that are recommended. So if I read in the paper tomorrow, somebody's saying, "Senator Hilliard is going to raise this tax or do that," you will know it's not true. Because we haven't even started the meetings yet of what we're going to do. We intend to take the information. We also intend to have a webpage or a page that you can go to, and give us suggestions, give us comments. And I like to tell this story, and John Fellows told me about it. When we did reapportionment about 10 years ago, we had this all online, you could follow it with your computers, make suggestions, and the reapportionment for the State Board of Education, for those 15 people, came from somebody here in Logan. They gave a suggestion on how the State Board should be allocated based on population. The committee looked at it, said, "That's a good one." So it was adopted. So the reapportionment for the State Board of Education was not done by the legislators and staff, it was done by somebody smart enough to look at the computer and figure it out. You know, this is, the computer gets so, well, we're not doing reapportionment, so I won't get into that. But the computer is such that we can make changes and look at them, and our fiscal models are such, that if we say, "Okay, if we raise sales tax a quarter percent on soda pop, what does that mean? If we cut taxes here, what does that mean?" And you'll soon find, as we talk about it, none of the suggestions I talk about, you're going to like. Now, maybe if you don't drink alcohol, one of the suggestions was to raise the price of alcohol. You may not oppose that. But most of them you're not going to like, and I don't like them either. Although, the ultimate choice is what happens if we do nothing. And that's really the kind of concern we have. So with that, Jonathan, I'm going to turn the time over to you, and let you go to it. And again, we have people here can ask the questions you may want. John?
Can I stand up? The mic is better. It's better, it actually is better for the Facebook screen.
Jonathan? Janine tells me it's better for the Facebook screen.
Oh, you guys spent the top end of the money?
I've got a mobile one if you'd like.
I would prefer that if I, could I do that?
Yeah.
Put it right up, just like the microphones at work. I can't hear it through the speakers, but I don't know if they can hear it on the Facebook Live. Never done Facebook Live before, so. So first.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
All right, I'll just stand. Well, thank you, first of all, thank you for hosting us and having us up here on a beautiful day. And do you really want to talk about tax policy today? Because it's super nice out there. I don't know if you noticed when you came in, but like, we could all go down to the Bluebird and grab something to eat? Okay, well, I guess we'll do this instead. This is, it's a little bit unusual for us in the fiscal office to come to a town hall and talk about things, because what we do is usually really boring. And we thought this was a really boring thing, this tax rebalancing, when we started talking about it three years ago. And I think, I think when, hopefully when we're done explaining what the problem is, you can see that it's actually, it is pretty mundane. It's not as scary as what it appears to have been at the end of general session. So let me just start out with what it's not, and then we'll talk about what the problem is. So, what we're talking about is not a tax increase. And in fact, legislators are talking about a tax decrease with this initiative. We set aside $75 million in the budget to accomplish that tax decrease. It's still there, waiting to be granted through legislation to taxpayers. So it's not a tax increase. The second thing that is not, is it is not a tax on business inputs. There are lots of concern about something called tax pyramiding, and taxing business inputs. That would then be, again, drive up costs of final goods. And in fact, we have a long track record in Utah of not taxing business inputs. Just this past summer, the state realized a bit of a windfall from something called the Wayfair decision, you may have heard of. So Wayfair versus, Wayfair, the furniture, online furniture people, versus South Dakota. South Dakota prevailed in Wayfair, and now states can collect sales taxes on remote sales. So if you buy something on the internet, you now get the sales tax. That was a bit of a tax windfall, and the legislature used that tax windfall to actually remove a tax from business inputs, just near, I don't know, nine months ago. So, and those business inputs were, these happened to be goods, these were...
Did we also reinstate part of the personal exemption?
Yes, and that was from federal tax, from federal tax reform, we also reinstated the Utah personal exemption. But in case, we're never talking, we were never talking about taxing business inputs, although it appears that way if you read HB 441. And that's the last thing that I would say that this discussion is not, and both the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House have stressed, this is not House Bill 441. Conversation that we're going to have is about a problem that we want to try to solve for Utah's long-term fiscal health. HB 441 did not pass, the process worked. People didn't like it, and so it didn't pass. And so now we're going to reengage the process and find the solution to what our problem is. So, yeah.
What question do you have already? Would you explain business input?
Yeah, absolutely. So business input would be something like lumber. So if you are a cabinet maker, and you make cabinets that you sell retail, your business input would be the lumber. Presumably, you wouldn't pay sales tax on that lumber, because the sales tax would be charged on the final transaction. The concern with HB 441 is that a number of services, if you think especially about professional services, the things that Senator Hilliard does, for example, legal services, engineering services, accounting services, a lot of those are inputs to business, and then the business creates whatever their product is and sells it, and the final product gets taxed. The concern with HB 441 is that pyramid effect would happen, the engineer would pay sales tax to an attorney, would then charge sales tax to a final customer, the customer then would have, at that point, a 6% increase in their margin if you had a 3% sales tax rate. That was a concern, that was, that's not what we were intending necessarily with this initiative. So, let's talk about what the problem is, and hopefully that becomes a little bit clearer. Sales tax is a slouch, that's the problem. Sales tax doesn't keep up. It doesn't keep up with the economy. It doesn't keep up with income. It doesn't even keep up with total consumption. And because of that, the sales tax base in Utah has, the growth rate has been declining over time. Now, that's not to say, sales tax is not growing, it's growing. It's just not growing as fast every year as everything else is growing. And so, over a long period of time, it's lost ground. Why is that happening? Well, two reasons. The first reason is, we're a growing state, right? In a growing state, you accumulate wealth. So, sales tax isn't going to keep up with the income, because you're going to take a part of your income, and you're going to save it or invest it. That's the first part. That's not the part we're talking about. The second part is, our consumption patterns have changed. So it used to be that we would buy goods, for the most part, and we would pay sales tax on goods. Here's my best example of that. I have a 19-year-old daughter now, when she was 16-years-old, I gave her a car for her birthday. Now, this was a junker that I, I know drive. She, I thought, you know, I really wanted a car when I was 16-years-old. I grew up in Michigan, I saved my money, I bought a car, I paid my sales tax on the car, the state of Michigan was happy, I was happy. I thought I could repeat that with my daughter. When I gave her the car, she was nonplussed. She was like, eh, whatever. In fact, she didn't get her driver's license until a year later. She's, and I asked her finally, you know, "Why are you not happy about this?" And she said, "I don't want a car, I want to go to Nepal." And I don't know if they collect sales tax in Nepal, but I'm pretty sure they're not paying Utah the sales tax that they're collecting if they are. So that's my, you know, personal anecdotal experience, right? Taste and preferences have changed, we're buying less goods and more services. Services largely are untaxed, and so over time, our tax base declines as a share of the total economy. Okay, that's the first larger problem. The second way that this manifests itself, and I guess the reason that is a problem for us in Utah, is all of our other revenue sources besides sales tax, they're restricted. So you have to use them on something. Motor fuel tax is restricted by the Constitution to be used on transportation. Income tax is restricted by the Constitution, you have to use it on education. Every, all the other sources people give us for certain things, so the federal government, of course, is not going to let us use federal money for our whims, that you have to use them for the federal program for which they're intended. So sales tax is the great equalizer. Sales tax lets us ride out the ups and downs, it lets us buy discretionary things when we need them, it lets us put out forest fires or wildland fires when we have wildland fires, and it lets us save money when we don't have wildland fires. So, because that source is declining, we're getting to the end of our flexibility. And I'll show you what that means in a second. So that's really, another problem is, sales tax is a slouch. So let's talk about, I mentioned this a little bit, the first factor in this problem. Growth in the general fund, so the general fund is what we call the checking account, if you will, for sales tax. Growth in the general fund, in general fund revenue is not keeping pace with needs in our state. This is, this is the phenomenon I talked about earlier, gave you the example of my daughter. It used to be that in 1947, on this chart, as a society in the United States, we consumed 73% of our consumption, total consumption, was on goods. And 27 was on services. And you can see, if you're taxing goods in this situation, you're in pretty good shape, right? And then over time, our tastes and preferences changed, we shifted away from goods and towards services, until about the mid-'80s, when those two lines crossed, to today, where we're spending 60% of our consumption on services and 40% on goods. And while our tastes and preferences are changing, our tax system is not. It's another way to look at it, this is Utah-specific, so this is the percentage of 2017 personal income in Utah, that goes towards services versus goods, that's our local version of that chart that I showed you previously. So, more than the majority, 2/3 of our personal consumption is now going towards services and away from goods. Example of this, I still own a lawnmower, anybody own a lawnmower here still? Mow your own lawn? Okay. I'm glad to see that I'm not alone, but a number of my neighbors no longer own a lawnmower. They have hired a maintenance company to come and mow their lawn, and I feel jealous every week when the red trucks pull up and they go mow all the lawns. But that maintenance cost is tax-free. My lawnmower is taxed. So that's what's happening here, people are shifting to services and away from goods, and that, over time, again, diminishes our tax base. This is a great way to show it, over time. So this is the sales tax base, so keep in mind, this is the base, not revenue. Because we adjust, the one way that we deal with this, or have dealt with this over time, is we just keep raising rates, right? As the base gets smaller and smaller, we raise rates to keep revenue on track. But you can see that since 1965 till now, we've gone from about 60% of the Utah economy being taxed, to about 30% of the Utah economy being taxed with sales tax. What this does is, it causes a shift in our budget. And again, you can see in 1996, the blue line on this chart is the education fund, that's the checking account for income tax. The red line, I think, I'm colorblind, so you're going to have to bear with me, but whatever that next one down is, is it red? Yes. Thank you for translating. That's why Andrea follows me around, that and pens, I always forget pens. So, general fund, the red line there, that's the checking account for sales tax. And you can see that back in 1996, those two were about an even share of these four funding sources in our budget. So these four legs of our budget, these are the pseudo-discretionary parts of our budget, income tax, sales tax, property tax, motor fuel tax. Add those together, back in 1996, about 40% of the total was income tax, and about 40% of the total was sales tax. And then you can see over time, that those two have diverged, until we get to last year, last fiscal year, or two fiscal years ago, when we were at about 50% and 35%, 50% being income tax, and 35 cents being, percent being, being sales tax. Just one really interesting thing on this chart that I'd like to point out is, if you look closely at those two gray shaded bars, those are recessions. And there's a little bit of a delay between a recession and government impacts, because of course, we're collecting income tax on last year's income. But you can see what happens in both of those gray bars, is that income tax actually falls very quickly, where our sales tax is a little bit better off in terms of volatility during a recession. That's sort of a, just a side benefit to this conversation, is that sales tax is less volatile than income tax. And we, you know, if you believe this chart, we are moving away from the more stable revenue source, and toward the more volatile revenue source. Another way to look at it, this is a very long-term look at total revenue, and then broken out into components, compared to the Utah economy. And the Utah economy here is measured by Utah gross domestic product. You can see that the gray shaded area at the top, total revenue, total state revenue as a proportion of the economy, okay, now keep in mind, we're still growing, so this is raw numbers, this is growing, but both are growing, and in this case, GDP is growing faster than total revenue. So total revenue is declining over time as a share of GDP. Income tax is about flat. Right? Now that makes sense, right? Because GDP is income plus government spending plus net imports and exports, right? Makes sense that income would track GDP, and it does on this chart. But you can see that sales tax, again, does not. And where they were pretty close to proportional back in 1996, the gap has widened to 19, sorry, Government as a whole, however, has declined, and that's being driven by this decrease in sales tax.
Jonathan, you were asked a question today about whether we're just spending more as a state.
Yeah.
Would you respond to that?
Sure.
Are we spending more as a state, that's first of all?
Yes, we are spending more as a state, but we're growing, and I'm going to talk about that in just a second. We absolutely are spending more as a state, and that is a really good problem to have. So I mentioned I grew up in Michigan, Mitch Bean is the guy that does my job in Michigan. I would hate to have his job, because he has no resources to do, to do, you know, meet the needs of the population of Michigan, because that economy's in decline. I would hate to have his job, because he has no resources to do his, to do, you know, meet the needs of the population of Michigan, because that economy is in decline, it's at least flat, whereas ours is growing. One way to measure that for, for Utah is that we have something called appropriations limitation. The appropriations limitation says, government spending can't grow faster than population and inflation combined. Starting with nineteen eighty-five, that's the cap, you have to stay within this limit adjusted for population and inflation. Except, we're not gonna count transportation and education. Those can grow as fast as you want them to. Well, those are two of the biggest, two of the three biggest cost drivers in, in government, Utah state government, right? The third one being Medicaid. And so we are, everything but education and transportation has not grown as fast as the economy. We're well below the spending limitation right now. But if you add in six hundred and sixty million dollars of transportation spending alone, we're over the spending limitation. So that, you know, you have to be careful about what you're constraining, if you're constraining with spending. Okay, and why is that important? Why, why do you have to be careful? We're in a, you know, we're in a growing state. I mentioned that. And in a growing state, our demands for government grow, and they, they actually grow, they're not linear in growth. They grow by more than population and inflation, because what happens, right? We say, government, our air is dirty. Clean our air, even though we're the ones polluting the air, right? We say, government, there are too many people on the trails above Logan, and I want to be able to recreate, wanna be able to go to Bear Lake and dock my boat, but there aren't any slips available. Government, provide recre- access to recreation, because there are too many people where I used to recreate. Or we say, government, I've, you know, my, my development is close to wildland, and there was a wildland fire, and it encroached upon my, my, my property. Put out the fire and make sure it doesn't come back. So as we grow as a population, our demands on government grow. And it's Senator Hilliard's job and the other legislators that are here today, it's their job to figure out, well, how much spending is appropriate? How many of those needs do we address? Just some, some concepts about why this is important for the general fund specifically. So I mentioned gas tax goes to transportation. Gas tax actually pays for less than half of transportation now. Income tax goes to higher and public education. All the other stuff that we expect of a government, all of those things that we're demanding of them because we're in a growing state, all of those things have to be paid by the general fund, this checking account for sales tax. So I mentioned air quality, I didn't mention Medicaid, but Medicaid. More than half of transportation now coming from sales tax. Public safety, access to recreation, support for children disabled and the elderly, homelessness, affordable housing, all of those things come out of this source that is decaying over time, the growth rate of which is decaying over time. Yet, we are, we're growing super fast. Who read the paper this morning? Anybody read the, I don't remember which paper it is. Des News or Salt Lake Tribune? There's an article that shows that Utah still has the highest birth rate in the nation. So we've, we're, we're growing fast, you know, we have, we have the median, the lowest median age in the nation, because we've got a high birth rate, and we've got in migration. So between twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen, as a whole, we were the fastest-growing state in the nation. This year, again, I expect will be the same, given what we just heard today in the paper about our, our birth rate. We grew by fourteen point four percent, and we finally reached that magic, was it, three million people number, right? Three million, three million citizens in, in Utah last year. So we're growing. Another, other ways to, to show that we're growing, you can see that all of these, these curves accelerate over time, meaning they bend up. Housing units from twenty-ten to twenty-seventeen went from below a million to, to a million one hundred thousand, so that's about a ten percent increase. Vehicle miles traveled, increasing dramatically since the end of the Great Recession especially. And then that Mighty Five campaign seems to be working, all of those ads that we're buying. Looks what happens to Utah, visitation at Utah National Parks since twenty-thirteen. Is it Super Six? Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, 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 sorry. My bad. Yeah, my bad, my bad. Almost, almost there. So we're growing, creates more demand on government, and then these guys have to figure out how to meet those demands. Third factor I mentioned a little bit, that alone, that decaying growth rate alone probably, probably wouldn't be as big a deal if this weren't a factor. Our revenues are siloed. You have to use them for certain things. The fastest-growing one, you have to use for education. This is kind of how it works, right? Property tax goes, stays with local governments, goes to pay for public education and other stuff, but we only count the public education part in our budget. Income tax goes to the education fund, can be used for public education and higher education. Going, skipping to the right, gas tax goes into the transportation fund, has to be used for transportation. And I mentioned, you have this great equalizer in the middle, the general fund. And what the general fund allows us to do is move money back and forth between these silos by spending general fund in the other silos. But the money does not go back the other way. So you can't use money from property tax, income tax, or gas tax to pay for general fund programs. By the way, this is not a new problem. This revenue silo thing is not a new problem. The two bubbles under our education fund used to be one bubble. Anybody remember what that was?
Yeah, this is a couple decades ago.
Yes, yes. Before nineteen ninety-seven, before nineteen ninety-seven, all of income tax had to go to public education, and we had this same problem back then. We had the baby boom that was leaving public ed and the echo boom, moving into higher ed. Costs in public ed were not growing as fast as revenue from the income tax. Costs in higher ed were growing faster than general fund could keep up with. And so the voters in Utah passed a constitutional amendment that said, you can use income tax not just for public ed, but you can now use it for higher ed and public ed. Which leads to my next slide. This is proportional funding of higher education from the general and education funds. The general fund is red, the education fund is blue, I'm hoping. And you can see that fiscal year nineteen ninety-seven is the first year after that constitutional amendment. And in that year, higher ed was about ninety-seven percent funded from sales tax general fund and about three percent funded from income tax, the, the education fund. And what happened over time is our economy grew, and as our economy grew and the income tax grew faster than, than sales tax, we put more income tax into higher ed and took out the sales tax to make up the difference, to use in other areas. We did that until about two thousand and one. Everybody remembers two thousand and one, dot-com bust? So in the dot-com bust, we reversed course. At that point, remember I said income tax is more volatile than sales tax? Income tax tanks. As a tradition, we don't necessarily cut budgets in, in public education very much, so we cut budgets everywhere else, moved that general fund back into higher ed, pushed the income tax into public ed. So you can see that come back up again, and then till fiscal year two thousand and three, we're actually higher than we were in nineteen ninety-seven, so more of higher education coming from income tax, or from general fund than nineteen ninety-seven. And then the process repeated, right? So we're back into expansion mode in fiscal year two thousand and four, five, six, seven, eight. Then, of course, the Great Recession happens, and we go back the other way. But what happens in ten, eleven, and twelve then is different than two thousand and three. We never get back to a hundred percent. We never even get close to it, which means we've now permanently moved money, general fund money out of higher ed and into other areas, because general fund revenue growth is not keeping up with general fund demand. And we're back in expansionary period again, now from, from fiscal year twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty, and you can see, again, we're on a downward slope, to the point where, except for a little fancy bookkeeping, we would have been out of money, out of general fund in, in higher ed at, for fiscal year twenty-twenty. The legislature, that's when we knew, this was the indicator that we had to do something like we did in nineteen ninety-six. Legislature, we started talking about tax rebalancing as the solution, and when it was clear that that was not going to happen, the legislature passed a bill called House Bill Three, and House Bill Three took a bunch of that general fund out of the current year budget for higher ed and moved it forward to next year so that we would have some more time. And that's why this bar kind of dips down, and it dips back up again. So that's three hundred and eighteen million dollars worth of general fund money still going to higher ed this budget year. On average, in this downwards slope, we're taking about a hundred and fifty million out every year. So we maybe have two years. Keep in mind, tax reform takes time, so you gotta, have to lose some lead time to, to implement any kind of tax reform. But this is really what's driving the problem, the, the issue. If we run out of general fund and higher ed, then we have no tool to address these differential growth rates in our revenue. We can't take any more money out of higher ed to make up for general fund, for sales tax being a slouch. So we're gonna have to do something different. What is it? So what are we gonna do that's different? That's where you guys come in, so I'm done. We really have identified four, four bubbles of areas where you can maybe address this through tax rebalancing. The first one is do nothing new. You, we could just do what we've done before, right? We could keep raising rates. Now, you, those of you who are students of tax policy are gonna say, wait a minute, you haven't raised the state tax, tax rate in a long, long time. No, we haven't. We cede all that authority to local governments now, and so the local governments raise your sales tax rate. So we can keep doing that, we can keep raising, we keep raising sales tax rates. We can do what we did back in, in two thousand and eight, when we were getting close to this same problem on that last chart, right? We were getting close to not having any general fund left. We can start reclassifying stuff as education. I don't know that, that citizens would like that real well, but we can get by. You don't have to do anything. It would be a good idea to do something, but you don't have to do anything. We could get by for a while. You can, you can eliminate the silos, right? You can eliminate the restrictions on those revenue sources. We could pass a constitutional amendment like we did in nineteen ninety-six that says, you know what? You can use income tax on anything. Or you can use income tax on any program that serves children, however you wanted to find it. So that's one, you could do something like that. And you, you know, you could presumably do that for every earmark we have. You can add a new type of tax. New types of tax might be, oh, a, a gross receipts tax, right? That's basically a sales tax paid by producers. So as they collect their revenue, they pay a rate on top of, on their revenue. You could do, you could do a, something that was in four forty-one, you could do a real estate transfer tax. So you pay a, a, a sales tax, if you will, on your home when you sell your home to someone else. You could, so anyway, there's lots of these things, all right? I mean, paramutual betting, that was on the table, believe it or not, right? That's about paramutual betting. So you could do gambling, lottery. Other states do that. And then finally, this is the one that I think our legislators are focusing on. Expand the sales tax base. Expand the sales tax base into services. That's the, part of the economy that's growing, right? Anybody remember Wayne Gretzky? I am really old. Remember Wayne, remember Wayne Gretzky? Yeah, yeah, okay. Wayne Gretzky, famous hockey player. He is, famous for saying when he was asked, you know, how did you become such a good hockey player? He would always say, what? He would say, I skate to where the puck is going to be, right? So that's the concept here. Skate to where the puck is going to be. Create a, a sales tax system that anticipates future transactions, consumer transactions, and capture sales tax on those. So think of, think of driverless cars, right? Who's, who's read that General Motors is not going to be in the automobile industry anymore? General Motors has said, I'm, we're gonna provide transportation services, we're not gonna provide vehicles. Vehicles are taxed, transportation services are not. Or, and this, and this is not like thirty years from now. Like that same kid, that sixteen-year-old that I talked about three years ago, she's now nineteen, and she's in college in New Jersey. My wife went out to New Jersey to visit her recently, and she asked me to rent her car, and of course, being a good fiscal analyst, I searched the internet for the best deal I could find in a car. Guess who it was from? Audi. Audi now rents vehicles directly to consumers. They're not selling the vehicles. They're putting them on lots next to airports. They still own them as the manufacturer. They rent them to, for short-term use. So that's, that is not a thing of the future, that's a thing of now. And that, the concept is, anticipate those things, capture that as part of your base so your base doesn't erode as quickly, lower the rate, so revenue stays the same or is less than what you were collecting before. And that, in my opinion, is what I do, that is good long-term policy for the state. We have a really long track history of this. This is why we, we are known to be the best fiscally managed state in the nation. We don't wait for crises. We anticipate crises, and we fix the issue before it becomes a crisis. I mean, retirement reform is an example, it's not on this list, but y'all remember maybe a decade ago, fifteen years ago, states found themselves in the situation of Illinois, that Illinois is still in, where they were not contributing enough to their pension fund to pay the pension benefits. And that's because nobody has pensions anymore. You can't afford them. So we reformed our pension system in Utah more than a decade ago, and, and we're now paying down that liability so that the folks that had defined benefit will get their defined benefit, and those that are new, newer employees, they will have defined contributions, just like most of us nowadays, where they invest themselves in 401Ks. So that's one example. Another good example is, two general sessions ago, maybe three, three now, right? Three general sessions ago, legislature recognized this imbalance problem, the same one we're talking about with sales tax existed, exists with gas tax, maybe to a worse extent. And we moved, the legislature increased gas tax by five cents a gallon, you'll probably remember that. More importantly, they indexed the gas, the gas tax to inflation. So it goes up a little bit as price goes up, whereas before, it stayed the same. The amount of, of vehicle miles, or the amount of gallons consumed per capita was coming down, and so revenue was coming down. So that fixed that problem. I mentioned remote sales and Wayfair. People started buying things on the internet. Our tax base started eroding. Legislature adopted Wayfair standards so that we could capture that, that revenue. And then we use that money to reduce business input taxes. And then just, just last general session, the, the property tax, which I mentioned pays for public ed, property tax, because of truth and taxation, does not keep up with the economy either. And the legislature said, you know what? For public ed, we're gonna take a hiatus from truth and taxation. We're still gonna be truthful about taxation, but we're, we're not gonna reduce the rate every time your value goes up. We're gonna hold the rate constant over time for five years, we're gonna do a look back after five years to see what happens with the revenue. And whenever we increase state contribution to public education... And whenever we increase state contribution to public education, we're also gonna require local districts to cover their share of the increase by indexing, basically. So those, and those, who'd have thunk? I mean, we're in this super red state in an expansionary environment, and we're going out and we're tinkering with taxes. That's because it's better to fix the roof when the sun's shining than it is to wait for a downpour. And that's what we wanna try to accomplish, uh, I think, with this tax problem, is look at this, you know, the immediate problem of the silos, and use this as an opportunity to fix the long-term problem with decaying growth rate and sales tax. That's it? Yeah? I don't know how you wanna handle questions, but...
Yes, um, if you have questions, I've got some forms up here. Please come, put these out there, we'll address those questions back and forth. This works for us, so come and get a piece of paper and plug in the question.
I wanna add to this discussion, uh, a little bit more as a, as a legislator who has to deal with these issues and how we make the decisions that we do. I think it's interesting, as Jonathan talked about this issue, I look at it this way. If we do nothing, either next year or the year thereafter, we're not gonna have any general fund money that we really can use for, for our needs. And it's really, to my view, the general fund has really been growing as well. You take, for example, people voted to Medicaid expansion. They voted to increase their sales tax by .15. Our fiscal analysts, our people say, "That's not sustainable on a long term." That long term, we're gonna have to do something to help fund that because of the growth, because of the cost of health, cost going up. So what are we gonna do to fund that? He had some listed on there, uh, besides Medicaid. For example, there's a lot of pressure, we need to clean the air. That's general fund money. That's not income tax money. And so, as we look at this, uh, I think the time's gonna rapidly come where we're just gonna sit down as a legislature, and we're gonna say, for example, this year, $1.3 billion was what they told us as the session started, was new revenue. Eighty-seven percent was income tax. Eighty-seven percent. Thirteen percent was general fund. And when you look at some of the bonds we've got out for roads and bonds for buildings that are not higher ed or public ed, they all have to be paid out of general fund. So a lot of times, the money's already committed because of decisions we've made. So the point's gonna come, in my view, that we're gonna be sitting down and saying, okay, uh, income tax is growing, we can give public ed 15%, but sorry, Health and Human Services, you're not gonna get any. In fact, you may even have some cuts we have to make there because we don't have any general fund money to give to you. Or, I say this too loudly, we have some people in our legislature that say, "Well, if we have surpluses like that, then let's cut the income tax." And so then you'd end up with neither one having very much money because of, I, I know, I've, I've done the budgets for many years. And I know when we put the budgets together for education and for public employees, we always try to hold them about the same. And for example, last year, public ed was given a 4, 4% increase in the WPU, which is basically for the growth and salary increases that they have on a local basis. We gave public employees 2.5%, but to public employees, we added health insurance and retirement benefits, and public ed has to pay theirs out of the 4%. So the percentage has come pretty close. They're not exactly, exact. Amazing thing to me, when I first started, the 1% increase for public ed, higher ed, public employees were pretty well equal in amount. This year, I think a 1% WPU is about $34 million, and a 1% increase for public employee salary is about $25 million. So over the years, we've increased the funding for public ed above public employees. Two reasons. Number one is that many of the public employees, when they retire, we don't replace them. We replace them with a thing called a computer. So mechanical, so you don't have as many public employees you used to have. Public education, thank goodness, we don't do that. There's some computers that some help some area, but teaching is more of a personal type of a thing. And then with the other additional benefits. So when I have somebody say, "All you do is cut public education salaries and drive teachers away because you cut all the money," uh, this last session, we had our fiscal analysts look at it. We gave public education $5.6 billion, uh, which 1.4 billion came in the last three years. So we really added additional money into public education. I love, the favorite question I had has been one of these, uh, groups with the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce, and the guy turned to me and he says, "Well, how much do they need?" I said, "Double what you've got, and they need more." It's just the nature, nature of the beast of what they do, because any one of you can sit down to a public ed budget, or a Health and Human Service budget, or a Mental Health budget, and you can say, "Boy, they need a lot more money." There's so many crying needs and challenges we have here. So I think that's kind of the dilemma we're sitting in if we do nothing. Now, what can we do? Now, I, again, I'll, I'll make this very clear. I'm not saying this is what we're gonna do. I'm not saying, I'm recommending it, so when you walk out of here, we want you to think, what can we do? And I heard somebody say today, "Well, we ought to restructure the income tax and charge the richer people more." That doesn't solve our problem. That's income tax, that's growing. What we need to do is focus on sales tax. And here's some of the things we talked about. Redefine education, mentioned that. Maybe we ought to call this, the prison, a branch of the Salt Lake Community College. Maybe, maybe.
It's education.
Yeah, it's education. Well, you can talk about that. What about, what about making the state tax, the, the State Tax Commission charge public education for the costs of collecting all the income tax money? They're actually giving a service to public ed to collect the income tax, the, the taxes we talked about, but it's being paid for out of general fund money. So we go back to public ed and say, "Maybe you ought to be paying your proportionate share of that cost." The, uh, the, let's see, I might catch, redefine, okay. Currently, there are two funds that are going to public education that are not earmarked. The income tax is. How public education is funded in the state of Utah? We require every school district to impose what we call a basic levy. And that basic levy, uh, when it first started, was a 30 mil, which was supposed to be 25% of the operating cost of public education. Over the year, we've dropped that down to about 11% is what that raised. The rest was filled in by income tax. We raised that, as we talked about this last year, as we tried to get away from truth and taxation and, and take advantage of some of the natural increase of value. It's now about 14%. We could say, we're gonna, because the state does not take any sales, property tax, it all goes, but constitutionally, we could. We could say, "We're gonna take that money away from public ed as a basic levy and fill it in with income tax." And, and that way, you're using income tax for the whole thing, and you free up money from that system to help fund for something else. Another one that surprised me, I knew about it, is if you drink alcohol, there's a tax on that that goes to fund school lunches. 200 million? 225 million? We could simply say, "No, we're gonna take that alcohol tax and put that in general fund, and then go to public education and say, 'With your money, you're gonna fill in this $225 million.'" Because these are not dedicated, these are, as you're trying to work this thing out. These are all kind of temporary solutions. I mean, down deep, we have to have something that will allow us, uh, as to grow and to meet what we need to do. Sales tax on online sales. We've talked about that, the Wayfair case. Jonathan may be sick this morning. We, we met, we met at eight o'clock this morning, and the question came up. And he said, "We got our first tax commission report yesterday, or today?" Yesterday. And the return on sales tax on these out-of-state was below what we had projected." So the money is already projected in our budget. They, they sit down with the, with Dr. Wilco and those people, they look at that, and they figure about what that's gonna collect. Now, this'll, you hate to take one tax thing being the final, but I'd a lot rather see it higher than lower. And so, that sales tax from, uh, the Wayfair case, uh, will solve some of the problems, but certainly not a large amount that we need here. May, we, we're trying to weigh that out and see how that comes. I've talked, we've talked about the constitutional mandates for public ed and higher ed. We have state mandates too. For example, we take $660 million of sales tax and put it in for highways. Highways, I'm gonna round these figures off, are $1.8 billion. 560 million comes from the gasoline tax. So when you buy gasoline, you say, "I'm paying for the roads." You're paying for less than half out of third of the roads. The other 600 million, 660 million dollars comes from sales tax. We can take that out. And if we do that, Valley View Highway won't be built in 2022. When you take that revenue out, and suddenly you've taken whatever percent you take out from the road construction, and the federal money is about the other 600 million. That's, that's it. Now, you know, I'm a little nervous because there was a ballot initiative that they wanted to raise gasoline tax 10 cents a gallon, and the promise was, all that money would go to public education. Failed, two to one. Failed pretty, pretty resoundly. Because people, you know, maybe they hate paying sales tax more than, than, uh, hate paying gasoline tax more than the other. But we, we're, uh, we have, also have about 25, no, about 45 million dollars in earmarks going for water development. Now, that's when you're in Trenton, and you wanna build a water system that your water people can't pay for it because you don't have enough residents to put everything in you. So you can borrow money interest-free from the state and put in a water system. And you pay it back what you borrowed, but that's all funding that we cover in the general fund. We could say, "No, we're gonna take that 45 million out and say to cities like that, huh, you just go figure out how you're gonna do it." And, and so all these have a lot of cost to them too. We have economic development that we pay after the fact. So we say to a business, "If you expand, and if you bring in and you pay this much in new salaries and this employment, we'll give you a refund back of some of the property taxes, some of the tax you've made." And so I have people say, "Ah, it's bad." We do post-performance. We don't give them before they do it. They do actually do it, they have to then prove they've gotten the results that we wanted, and that's what, only about 3 million. And that's, uh, still being paid back. We cut a deal with tourism. And we said to tourism, "We're gonna give you some money so you can advertise out-of-state and bring people to the mighty five. And we're gonna do, do that, but, and, and we're gonna then look at your sales in those areas, what you do, what the sales of the restaurants and all those around, we got a measurement app, and if you exceed a certain level in sales tax, we'll give you a small portion of that back." Well, that's about $25 million, but you can say that, no more of that. You should do your own advertising, we won't help you. Because, actually, the investment turns out to be a lot more money than that, by people coming into state. We have, you know, we settled a tobacco case a number of years ago, and we in the legislature said, "You know, what we ought to do is rather than take that tobacco settlement money and spend it every year, let's put it into a trust fund." And so that when this trust fund builds up, there'll be interest coming out of it to help pay for programs that are caused by cigarette smoking. It would cover secession of tobacco. It would cover, uh, Huntsman cancer treatment. It would cover drug courts, where kids and them in drug courts. I don't remember what the fourth thing was. Yeah, enforcement. To, to get kid, to make sure that, that cigarettes were not sold to kids and that kind of stuff. Well, we've spent that money, so that trust fund is not nearly as big as we thought it would be. We have about 30 million in it, I mean. If Jonathan doesn't remember. But we tried to do the same thing over with severance tax. The trouble with severance tax is you pull it out, it's gone. And so we argued and set up a constitutional trust fund that said, "As the severance tax is coming out, let's put it in a trust fund, like we do the school trust money, and then as that money builds up, that can be used to mitigate the costs." We can do away with that. We said, "We don't wanna save any of the money from, 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 from that." We can, uh, we can cut down the deposits that go automatically in the rainy day fund. Trouble with rainy day fund and budget, and, and bonding to build is it's one-time money. And, and you know, the sad thing I found out about bonding, you have to pay it back. I thought it was just free money, but no, you have to pay it back. We can raise the sales tax. Now, let's talk about that for a minute. If I understand it correctly, Jeanine probably knows better than I do, the sales tax in Logan for a long time was 6.6%. It was raised by Prop Three by .15. So it should've gone up to, to 6.75. And then it was raised again by the county for roads, 25%. So it should now be over 7% sales tax in Cache Valley. I found when you raise sales tax, people buy out-of-state. Now, they buy a car in Preston, they still have to register and pay sales tax. But Chick Bullen taught me a good lesson. You can go to Preston and buy a Haybaylor or a Combine, you never register that. And so you, you avoid the, the sales tax because it's so much less there than it is here. One of the things we did about sales tax a few years ago is, we reduced a part of it, the state portion for food. So when you go in Lee's Market or Smith's and you buy food, if you look at your slip, you pay the regular sales tax to Logan City, the regular sales tax to Cache Valley Transit or warehouse sales tax, and to Cache County, but rather than pay 4.7%, which is the state rate of the 6.8, you pay 1.75. So one of the, uh, comments is, you can restore that portion of sales tax. Now, I understand the argument that this is regressive, hard on the people in port. First of all, those who have food stamps or WIC pay no sales tax. They don't pay sales tax when they go to the store. We could do a much better thing if we were to say, "If your income is below a certain level," whatever that may be, 30,000, 25, whatever it may be, "we will give you a, a credit, maybe a hundred-dollar credit." And that would make up for what you have to pay in sales tax and change it. Because quite frankly, I suspect I get a bigger tax break with, with tax cut on my food than somebody who's barely getting by in poverty, because I like to buy steaks occasionally, and they can't afford it. And so, yeah?
Should we try and do some questions?
Sure.
I think so. Move over here to the microphone so we can hear about... I'm sure you're on a playlist to move back. One more over.
Okay, very good. In no random order, I've taken the questions, let me just go through them. Senator, you or somebody in staff or legislators can answer any of these. Okay? So first one. Sales taxes are now distributed locally, 50% point-of-sale, 50% population. Question is, maybe that should change? Any comments on that one?
Okay, so you understand what that means. It's an incentive to North Logan to have car dealers in North Logan. Because when you buy a car in North Logan, you pay the sales tax, half of that sales tax stays in North Logan. The other half goes to the state and is distributed across the state based on population. Well, that doesn't, you know, Logan certainly has some advantage that people here in Logan, uh, when you pay sales tax, but now, now you see why an RC Willie is so important to Syracuse. Because, and I'll tell you, uh, that's, an issue's been raised in the legislature every year, and the cities that really rely on this end up really lobbying hard against it, we've never been able... I personally don't think you should zone for, for dollars. I think the natural decision should be made, "Do you wanna build Logan? Fine." "Do you wanna build North Logan? Fine." It shouldn't be a, a measure of, of the tax break to that city to do that. But I'll tell you, the cities are all pretty well united when that bill comes up in the legislature to oppose it. They say, "No, this is what we've always done."
Senator, we, we discussed this in our political subdivisions meeting this morning, and Senator Stevenson, Appropriations Chair, uh, his, his comment as we talked about this was that, uh, one, one argument in favor of the point-of-sale is, is an example of if you build a retail complex, uh, the money that stays in that city goes to support the roads, uh, the law enforcement, and, uh, other things like that related to the development. And, and that's something, if you spread it out with a different formula, it's not, not covered quite as well. So there, there are some issues, uh, both ways, but that, that is a good question.
And I'll say this, I talked to the mayor of Providence, and he said, "If you change the sale base from products to services, suddenly this model we fixed with the idea of getting sales tax here gets cut because we have no services." And those were... And those where services are located suddenly get a bonus because we can think them out of there.
Right. Okay, uh, next question. This is a, um, I think we can clarify something on this. It says, uh, the, the VIN, the, I don't know, VIN diagram did not include reduced spending. When we talk about example here, Bear Lake boat slips and one point five million for the Hatch Library. Uh, should a reduction in spending be looked at before new taxes? Now, I think you can address the, uh,
Let me make you feel right.
The Hatch Library and the Bear.
Hatch Library did not get funded. It was in the recommendations that Executive Appropriations Chairman, it got so much stir, it was not funded.
Neither did West End.
Right. Neither, neither of those were funded. As for reduced spending, that's certainly something we need to look at.
The January, uh, June, nothing new.
Right, right, exactly.
Nothing new in tax policy, then.
Right.
And that's what would have to happen. And I, and I'll say, you know, it's interesting to me. What I think is great, somebody else thinks is pork, is a waste of time. And, and so it really gets to be whose ox is being gored. But let me tell you one, let me tell you one that didn't get funded this year. Val Potter had a bill asking for twenty-four million dollars, if I got the figure right, to help with, with, uh, low-income housing. One of the real crises we have in the state right now is that people can't get low-cost housing. You know, if you don't, if you don't understand what's going on, you don't have kids out looking for houses right now. It's really hard. And so what Val Potter, he was co-chair of the committee with Senator Andre. And they came up with some plans that the cities would have to make plans to do this. And they had recommended twenty-four million dollars to the general fund. We didn't have it to fund it. Now, twenty-four millions is a lot of money when you start carrying budgets. It's not too hard to get fifty thousand for something or twenty-five thousand. But when you start talking, and, and as a practical matter, five million would even dim.
Five, five million would help. We, we could spread it out thinly and it would help get people into houses and, and, and help with the crisis that's out there. There's a lot of people that just can't afford rent, they can't afford to own. It's, it's a major issue. We're about, I think it's fifty thousand units short in the state of Utah right now. And that's according to the Kim Gardner study. It, it's, it's a serious problem.
I can tell you, uh, I made a lot of enemies when I was Executive Appropriations Chair by cutting out programs. I always said, if you don't like what I did, you come and run, run against me in Logan. But, but it's tough. It is really tough. Because like I say, what to me, I mean, to me, it's really important what, what Julie Hollis does here. And I was able to get fifty thousand dollars for her to promote Cash Valley. So people would come and people would stay and spend money here. Well, some people would say, that's a waste of money. We shouldn't be promoting tourism. I think it's an investment, but that's, that's the issue. But again, like you say, we get a lot of publicity for things that don't happen. Because somebody talks about it someplace and somebody hears it, by jove, that's what happened and they have no idea it didn't really happen.
That's right. I, I've got another, this is a, uh, from one person. It's three questions. I'm going to read them together because they, they're related. Says taxing services. Are services being categorized? What percentage of the population has a stake in the system? And how are we prioritizing essential services and infrastructure?
Let me tell you, uh, and I can take some real defense on this. This whole bill, House Bill four forty-one, that's now dead, that talked about taxing services, was a House bill. I never saw it. It was never presented in the Senate. We talked about some things in, that may have been in it, very minor, because I knew it'd never pass the Senate. Because first of all, it wasn't done right. You, you don't just suddenly spring a bill like that the last week of the session and expect it to go through. One of the big issues, and I think Jonathan talked about it, is called pyramid-y. Let me give you this example. If I'm a McDonald's and I buy meat and I buy a bun, I don't pay sales tax on that. Because I charge sales tax on the finished product. Now, we could pyramid all we want, and that would be really unfair. You can take the carpenter. I go out and buy wood, I pay sales tax on it. I'm building a cabin and I sell it to a homemaker, or I sell it to a furniture store. He pays me sales tax, then he turns around and sells it for sales tax. He just added that percent. And if you have competition from out of state that doesn't do that, it'd be just like three sales tax on a car. And I suddenly come to, to Wilson Motor and say, I don't know, I mean, thirty thousand's a lot of money, but I don't want to pay eighteen percent more in sales tax that you've added on by, by pyramid-y. So when we sat down and talked, talked to the state tax commission, they said that over seventy-five percent of services are business-to-business. Well, now that gives the optical. You mean if I did a hundred thousand dollars legal work for Rio Tinto, they don't pay sales tax because it's part of the input of their doing their business. But if Herman Olson comes to me and I want to do an estate for him and I charge him three hundred dollars for a will, then I charge him sales tax. What? You know, that's kind of the optical thing. Now, how do we collect it? We were told that sales tax, uh, is, is only about forty percent not compliant?
Uh, no, it's really sales tax now?
On, on services.
Oh, on services. Oh, you don't know. I mean, that's, those are really important questions. That's why we're going to have to talk to people. Because, let me just ask you this. How much did you pay in income tax last year? Do you know where you live, look, find out, what you pay in income tax?
Yeah.
Okay, you do income tax. How much did you pay in carpet tax? Did you know that?
Yes.
Okay, you know where you live, look, find it. How much did you pay in sales tax on goods? No idea, right? How much did you not pay in sales tax on services? That's the nut we're trying to crack. How much is out there that's taxable that they would be paying on? And so we, that's why I come out and talk to people. And the one thing that HB four forty-one had in it, probably a good thing, is it started slow. A lot of us lack data over a three-year period. So the question about what portion of the tax incidence question, what portion of the population is impacted? I think actually all of the population is impacted in some way. Questions to, to agree. Do you need to collect that data?
Now, your twelve-year-old son goes out and mows three lawns. It's a service. Does he go there and he maybe charges fifteen dollars a lawn? Now he says, wait a minute, I need seven percent of that for my sales tax. Now I have to file a return and get it, but compliance with that kind is very low. And state tax commission absolutely cannot audit that and try to figure that all out. What about the woman who teaches music lessons in her house, piano lessons? How does she collect it? How does she do it? I raised this question. I said, I'm a waitress in a, in a restaurant and somebody gives me a five-dollar tip. But I said, now wait a minute, I need to have seven percent to pay the sales tax on that. Or do I just eat it myself and pay, lose seven percent, file a return? Uh, the interesting thing, they came to us and said, the, the realtors got out of it because they're going to have a transfer tax on the value of the home. So if you had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, what was it, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, something like that, that you'd have to pay on selling your home. If you built your own home and you got it finished and it was worth two-hundred-thousand dollars, you'd pay a, a sales tax of, of a hundred and seven, seventy-five dollars. Well, if you don't do it that way, you go, currently, if you build your own home, you pay for the sales tax on the, on the carpet. You pay the sales tax on the paint, but you don't pay the painter the sales tax on his. So now you suddenly start changing this whole thing. But now the, the painter says, well, the paint costs this, but my work costs this, I need sales tax on my work to put it in, to do it. They start pyramiding and this type of thing. So that's why they said, we're going to just turn on the scale.
I wish, uh, as far as that aspect, I was a lot of question about how are essential services being protected? There's a couple of ways that four forty-one divisioned it, and you don't have to, I don't know. But as is how the legislators, that, you know, food and residential energy, you don't charge as much tax on those because they're essential. Healthcare was not. That is frankly the symbol largest growing service in the state of the nation. If we were really going to escape from the huckies, you know, we can tax on them. But we.
I didn't say that.
So we would, so we would. But, uh, but the sponsors of HB four forty-one basically said, you know, you know what? That's, that's the essential need. What we'll do is we'll treat health insurance like we treat all other insurance, premium tax, a very low rate. But we're not going to go tax the actual financial services. That was one of my failures, housing. So you could have a tax on the entire sale of the house. Four forty-one, that's, that's more a good than a service, but, um, four forty-one said, we're not going to do that. But I'm going to charge three percent on the sale of the house through very low, very low tax rates. Like there's something from the housing history that looks through because a lot of, and I'll be frank, mostly by loss of developers. And so, you know, they go out and use, look like they're treating themselves figuratively. But that's, those two things, those were happening by, um, you know, Ryan did all this work. So there's another one that was more an offset to the tax. And that is the way that legislators are talking about, the word talking about reducing taxes. Remember you brought the base that reduce the revenue and reduce taxes elsewhere so that the debt is lower. The way they were talking about reducing taxes was by offering an income tax credit, a current rate, so social security pensions. Expanding the current rate and expanding what you now call the Utah personal exemption. So that's for the repayment charges. Because they were paying tax on services, they would have a tax relief.
Let me explain that to you. Our commission, and I really appreciated President Adams, I met with this last night. And he said, my goal is number one, temporarily, or to fix this problem we're talking about here. More importantly to me, I want to get our economy in a position so that our children will have upward mobility. I can talk about that. My dad never graduated from high school. Uh, my older brother graduated from college, my sister later did. But for most of us, you look at, and come from homeless farming communities in Cash Valley, many of our parents never graduated from college. We're really the first ones that moved up now. What can we really give to our children so that they can move up? What can we do for the homeless to at least put them into the poverty level so they have something in poverty, into middle class, move it up? So as we're looking at these tax policies, that's the issue that's got to be in. And, and you talk about reduction. And that's what part of this thing was, expand the base and then we'd cut the rates so that the income tax would go down slightly, sales tax to general rate would go down slightly. So they would balance out for the state. They obviously would not be neutral. Because if you bought a lot of service, a lot of services, you would end up paying more. If you bought daily merchandise, you would end up paying less. And how we handle that. But now, you have any more questions?
Like, I got a few more. This, this is a good one. I've, I've heard this before. It says, my wife is a small business owner who owns a small Pilates studio. It, it was our feeling that the sales tax reform, um, is being ram-rodded through the legislature. And I think we've addressed that. It, it was rushed and, and too short in order. Isn't this something that should be voted on by the general population? And can legislators pass a sales tax reform without a public vote? And the easy answer to that is yes. Your legislators can pass it, pass, pass a tax. Um, also, your school board can pass taxes. Your county council, your city councils can all pass taxes. My recommendation to everybody is you watch the people you elected because they have that ability. And if they see a need to raise a tax, they're going to raise a tax. Truth and, truth and taxation requires them to put it out in front of the people for a public hearing. You can voice your concerns. But it, for, for property tax, right. But it's, it's your responsibility as, as a general public to keep an eye on your elected officials, myself included, to make sure you know what's going on. Jonathan?
As a public, you can, I think this is true, you can refer that though. If you don't agree with your elected officials and you can get no signatures, you can put that on the ballot as a referendum.
Right, right.
So you understand initiative is you start out to do something new. A referendum, that legislature or the city council or whoever have done something. And then you have so many days to get signatures and then it's stopped until there can be a vote of the people to affirm or, or reverse what you did.
But the changes you guys made on initiatives, does that also apply to referendums?
Is the what?
Signature gathering.
I think it's half. Do you know, Christine?
The changes you guys made this last session towards valid initiatives, does that also apply to?
I don't think what we did applies to referendums, but I do think that referendums require half the number of votes that initiative does. And we've had some referendums here in the state of Utah, and they ended up being defeated by the voters when they finally voted on it.
A referendum passed.
See, my biggest problem, and I could share it in this, in true experience I had, and how long ago, I was in Albertson's. And this sweet lady came up to me and she said, Senator, I teach school. I don't have enough money for class books or for this. We've got to have more money. You've got to give me more money. And I said, where am I going to get it from? And she said, that's your problem, Senator. I just need to have more money. And that same day, I was in the same store, and a man came up to me and said, Senator, I have a small business. I'm just being killed by taxes. I don't know if I can keep my head above water much longer. I'm going to have to close my shop. You have to cut my taxes. And I say, what am I going to do about surfaces? That's your problem, Senator. So, so often, and initiative isn't a vote, boy, it's easy for me. It's easy for me to vote, yes, I'm going to get all these benefits. But don't, 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 don't really talk to me about the tax implication. Or on the other hand, it's really easy for me to give a valid initiative, I'm going to cut your taxes. Boy, most people will vote for that because we think government has too much money anyway. I'll tell you, twelve years being Executive Appropriations Chairman through some really trying times. In two thousand and eight, we had five point four billion dollars of money in sales tax and income tax. That dropped one billion dollars in that fall. Went from five point four to four point four. Many agencies were cut twenty-five percent. Public did get a titch, but near, not near what everybody else got. And so I sat down and went with agencies and what they had to do, and I'll tell you what they do. They have to let people go and replace them with machines, with computers. And so I tell kids, when I talk to kids in school, I said, you better get a job, not like your parents have, because those jobs won't even be around in ten years. You need to get job training that you can, you can do with the changing economies we're talking about here. So we can put it on the ballot, and I think we stand for election and we have to stand and defend what we did. And they're never easy. I, I, you know, as I said going through here, let me tell you, our committee, it, are going to have eight public hearings. I don't know whether we'll have another one up here in Logan. I had this all planned and, and I would like to have had it with all, all fourteen of us here so that I could hear. We're going to take input from what people say. Email me. You may email me and say, absolutely, don't raise my taxes. I don't want to pay taxes on service. If you have to cut government service, do it. That's, that's my job. Or you may say, wait, 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 wait. Don't cut mental health. Don't cut kindergarten. Don't cut, you know, whatever it is. And we have to put together a recommendation that we hope to have done in August or September that we can sit down and see where the governor is, where our bodies are, and what really we can do. And, and I'll tell you, these are very, very hard votes to take. I wish I could vote every time to cut a tax. I wish I could vote every time to add additional money to education or to help the human services. But I know I only have so many, many dollars. I don't know where it comes from. How do you do that?
Let me, uh, I've got two more questions here. The first one talks about services, our healthcare and education included. We touched on this before. Four forty-one was the, the bill that came through the session. We're starting over. We're not starting with four forty-one and adding to it. Uh, the tax on services is a big question mark. So trying to hit specifics on, on services, uh, we're not going to do that. It's up to the committee to come up with recommendations, and then it's the job of the legislature to decide if we agree or don't. Uh, the question here, the next one is, what has the inflation rate in education spending been since they were given the appropriation in nineteen ninety-seven that has handcuffed the legislators? Inflation rate in education spending. Any comments on that?
Actually, the opposite. First of all, I just wanted to refresh my memory for the symbol of messaging on our last slide. I was, I barely noticed that we used blue and white and put the cut sake on the slide.
Nice.
It's the inflation or the growth in the cost of non-education spending that's pulling the revenue out of higher instead of inflation in higher and pushing it out. And I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head what the year of your changes, but you can go to our website, which is budget that you talked about, and see a tender history there. I don't think it matters.
The final comment this person makes is, "This isn't a revenue problem. As revenue has been growing, it is what the legislators can do with the money." Correct? We have budget surpluses, and I think we address that. It's a good point. There's a budget surplus in one fund and not in the other, and the point is, you're right. That's right. I've got one last, one last question here. It's kind of hard to read. It's written in pencil on slick paper. Okay, are other states charging sales tax on services? And I know they are. How many states are doing that?
It depends on how you define services. For example, dry cleaning in Utah is taxed. That's a service.
Hotels are considered a service. We do that in Utah.
We do, we already, we charge sales tax on services already, so it's not a broad, probably the answer to that question, I would say that probably every state that charges sales tax, charge some services, some services. Are states charging sales tax on a broad swath of services? That's the question. The answer is yes, there are a few doing that. I mentioned South Dakota, they're one of them. I think more importantly, though, almost every person who lives in I drop in the other state is talking about it, because we're all facing the same problem. Connecticut had the same debate we did this general session. Florida, about twenty-five years ago, so it's not, it's something that's on everybody's mind. You tend to leave out those things, probably, like I said, we do that because we're, say, one of their systems is.
In response to South Dakota, they have no income tax, and they have very little manufacturing business things, so you're comparing different kinds of economies in what you're doing. And Utah's really going well. The business is done well, the income tax has been generated well. I know Steve mentioned, "Well, the governor promised that once we invested, we'd have this all this money." We have. We've given education lots of money in the last few years because we've had the economy go up, but we're now to the position that we can make that. And like I say, we could very easily end up giving public education a 15% increase until health and human services, and mental health, and those, and people say, "Oh, you're just scaring me." No, no, I sit in those rooms, and I have to say to them, "Sorry, folks, I don't have any money. So now how are we going to meet your needs and do what we need to do to provide services?" And some just cut out services. Now, services, professional services, for example, I was talking to a friend of mine who's a CPA, and he says, "We do a lot of work in Idaho and Wyoming. So if you adopted for us, we'll get a branch office in Preston. We'll do all of our Idaho and Wyoming work out of Preston, where there's no sales tax." I know that I compete with attorneys across the nation, and so you can easily get a law firm in Denver to do the legal work here in Utah, with computers what they do, so that I, rather than pay me shows, or they hire the attorney in-house. So now, instead of paying Olson and Hogan, or Idris Anderson and Olson money, they now have an attorney in-house who does the legal work, the sales tax. So, when you start talking about this, it's kind of looking, "Well, yeah, we're going to collect this," and then bingo, it melts away. It's not there. So it's really difficult. Now, I say all this, let me tell you, I painted a pretty bleak picture. It is, it's going to be tough, and we're going to have to make some decisions in how we do it. I would anticipate that what we're going to do is going to be more in lanes of doing a lot of little things, so that we're really going to add up to do what we need to be concerned about an expanding base, because our demands are expanding for things that, I don't care who you are, I sat down with you and went to the program that needs money, you'd say, "Give it to them. What are you doing? That's a program community."
I don't think I would say that.
No, I can show you.
I need more money in my budget, and she needs more money in her budget, but government isn't God to decide, oh, everybody's budget, but it doesn't exist.
That's the issue that we have to deal with. Any other questions?
That's it. There's one little comment. It says, "If services are taxed, would there be a differential between the types or levels of services?" And again, we haven't defined whether we're going to tax services or not, so that the question is, really can't be addressed. We don't know where we're going with this. And let me just add to what Senator Hilliard said. As legislators, I mean, I come from years in the local government, six years in the county council, eight years in North Logan City as a mayor and a council member, and I never raised taxes but once, and that was for a major road project with the county. I fought tax increases and kept the costs down. Being in the state legislature, I see those demands and those needs from social services, transportation, higher education, public education, and all of them are very, very valid. And in my research, I determined they're all very valid and growing. The needs are growing in all of these areas. We try to cut. That's our goal, is to keep government reasonable, but we've got to do something to even things out, to move those silos so that we can pay for what the services people expect. Corrections, highway patrol. Take a look at the state budget, look at the various components of the state budget, and every one of them is important to a group of people, and really, all of us fit under that. People expect their government to do something for them. Do we overspend in areas? Yes, certainly we do, but we're trying to come up with something that makes sense for the state and balances the budget, but puts the money where the people expect it to be.
The whole discussion so far in the legislature has been on the idea that if we expand the base or do something here, the increased revenue will be used to lower the overall rate, so that the net impact of the state of Utah would be the same. The advantage, as you talk about going to services, for example, is services are growing, and so, five years from now, and ten years, as this service continues to grow, it will generate money that is now not being generated because the base on property is shrinking. And so, that's really, so when you look at it, you need to look at something that long-term will last and do. And like I say, you need the votes to pass it, and it's never easy, never easy to do a tax increase, especially when there's, you know, it's really interesting. When the economy's doing well, and you say, "Well, now's probably, if you're going to raise tax one way, now's the time to do it," people say, "What are you doing? You've got surpluses. You don't need to raise taxes." If on the other hand, the economy shrinks, and now you're short money, that's not a good time to raise taxes. People don't have the money because of the shrink. It's really counterintuitive. But I'll say this, I've come through this whole thing with a great deal of respect for public employees. When we had to cut budgets, I saw public employee agencies that gave their employees furloughs, and they came to work anyway, even though they weren't paid. I'll bet Steve could tell you about some of the sacrifice teachers make in his school district and Logan School District to take care of your children. And, you know, would I do that? I probably couldn't do that. That'd drive me crazy. But we're in a society of looking at this, and again, I don't want you to feel like all these things I've talked about or what we're going to do, I have no idea. We could very well spend our time and come back and say, "To help in human services, we don't see any leverage to increase any taxes in that or expanded services." Let me just share something on the service issue. If we expand the base on services and cut the state rate to make it neutral, those entities that get sales tax, for example, the city or C D, C, Cache Valley Transit, they will continue, they will get an expanded base, so if you leave their rate the same, they get more money. So at one time, it was talked about lowering that rate from one cent they get down to .79, so they end up with getting the same amount of money. Then they came up with a proposal, they were not going to include the cities in the sales tax on services, so you'd only pay sales tax to the state. And by that time, I knew the House was out of control and would never pass. There was too many moving around on it.
There are more of them than you.
But I've got Scott Sandel on my side.
Senator Hillary and I are standing tough on this.
All he had to do is tell Senator Sandel they were going to include hay. Are there any questions? I mean, we've tried to do this other way. Steve?
I would just like to know, what is the most common way that roads are being built these days? And is-
Federal funds.
Okay, federal funds. How about, what percentage is usually done by bonding of state?
You have to be careful on bonding, because you have to pay them.
I understand how paying bonds for schools, I understand how bonds, but I'm just saying, we earmark a certain amount of money to go to transportation. That means that that's really important, and I know you don't like earmarks, I've heard you say that before. I think that's one area we've got to look at, and I think we need to understand that we have a transportation funding problem in the state.
So we could do, we could, we could take the $660 million back and borrow money, so we have about $3 billion worth of debt in the net available, so maybe it's just five years, right? So you could borrow $660 million a year, five years, to build roads, and take that $660 and put it back in operations. The problem is, you need the $660 to repay the bond. So once you get to $3 billion, you've got to have debt service.
I'm aware that bonding isn't free, but I could make a case for my school district that I would darnly need a fund just by saying, by building a school without bonding.
Sure. So you have to have it under a lot of needs.
Yeah, so, I'm just saying, we have a problem in that the roads are, are not, fuel tax does not keep up with what we need to do with roads in this state. So, solve that issue and pretty much solve the problem.
And that is on the table, I would say.
The answer to another question is Georgia.
Some in Mexico, Washington, Hawaii, South Dakota, is before you have?
Not all services. I think all states tax some services, but those who have a, a grocery tax, businesses, all businesses, they kind of pay tax on all of their services.
Mostly church, sort of, you know, Christ on Sunday, 23, seven meetings.
Well, look at all of that. It's the question, do you do it at all or not? Question?
So a lot of businesses are small, and if you, in some cases, you not only take the money, which probably takes somewhere in the other anyway, but you're also going to, you just look into the other companies, and it is-
Yeah, the replies.
That's the point that I talked about, is the cost of collection, in a lot of instances, will negate, negate any tax if you wanted to accumulate, and so, that's definitely part of the discussion. What is the cost of collecting?
A lot.
In some, in some regards, it will, and what is the compliance rate to get it? How many more inspectors, or how many more whatever, compliance officer that you will, would have to be employed to collect the tax? Yeah, that's definitely part of it.
I think it's important to be on that, with a couple of compliances, is if you're talking about a piano teacher, and she's paying, you know, she's paying, it has to be money, she actually has to get the time to collect sales tax, and she has to, you know, collect sales tax from her clients, which is, it has to be a way to raise, if you're going to inspire people to be less, because if you're only teaching a handful of kids, you're going to work your time, which is another-
Or you'll just quit teaching for now.
Yeah. Those are, well-
Paul, you had a comment.
Just on the, about transportation, what Senator Hilliard stated, like education goes in a lot of banks, and everything else, corrupting education goes in a lot of banks. 12% of the law, 10% of those just make-
Publicated or higher, both?
Of the total of all revenue sources, it's, you know, the public is higher. Of the discretionary sources we're talking about, 38% are lighter. So, yeah, 61% of the higher.
The reason the other is different is there's so much federal money going into health and human services. So if you exclude that out of it, that's why it makes the education look smaller. But like I said, 61% of discretionary money goes for public and higher education. And let me just say something else. When we took this $600 million over, I voted against it, because I don't like earmarks. But the argument in favor was that about 17% of our sales tax come from the sale of cars and car-related products. So if I buy a car and I pay $800 in sales tax, I should expect that that money's going to go to improve the roads I'm going to drive my car. That was the argument. I don't like dedication of the funds, but I can tell you this, if you pull the $600 million, or $660 million out of transportation, you're going to see, you're going to see a lot less building, and that may be a good thing. People may out of ride bikes and buses and not drive their cars as much, you know, I've heard that, I've heard that argument. Casey has a comment. I'm going to turn to him.
Yeah, I think maybe in the interest of, I got to get up early, I got my house, I want to go there. So I need to tie this off, and hopefully, help people. So, for me, this has been an incredibly difficult conversation, right? And I think fundamentally, it starts with, we were talking about revenue, and that, to me, is almost nailed on the chalkboard, because in some way implies that government creates wealth and service and all of this. What we are doing is talking about redistribution, reallocation of funds that you all have earned through your own labors. And that, to me, is an incredibly difficult position to be in, and we look up there and we try to make the best decision, the most prudent decision that we can, based upon that principle. I think it's about starting one in our delegation, that we look at these numbers and these dollars and recognize they came from somewhere. And in our project, to hopefully spend those $800 in a way that does justice to this, like we always think, even earning money. But we've got to do something, and if nothing else, hopefully, we out, or illustrate to you the problem of the case, the problem that was HB 441 that we tried to solve, and that the problem that still exists that we're hoping to solve. In the HB 441 debate, what was most helpful for me, and I can say to the other legislators, and I think will be most helpful for Senator Hilliard's task force, is it's easy to complain, but complaining without offering an alternative is just white and basic. And so, what I think would be the most helpful, we've talked about it a little time, but if you have specific concerns or ideas to make things better, send those to us. That is the purpose of this group, that's the purpose of tonight, is let the people, through their own competencies, help us solve what is clear and very difficult to solve. So rather than compete this round the rest of the night, because we'll be up all night, I think you do, I need phone, I need alcohol, whatever, send me something. Send Lyle something, send your other representatives something, and we'll try and work something during the summer, with intentions of solving this, so I can, hopefully, hear from us.
I'm going to recognize Chris for just a comment.
Senator, what I think that is, HB 441 was, is the truth that, from what I understand, is the House had enough votes that it wouldn't pass the House, it was the Senate that basically killed the bill.
Well, the Senate, what they don't tell you, I'm not even running for Senate, is that in that debate, the House had what was called the senior budget, which cut all our excess spending out, went off the base budget last year, and said, "Let's get rid of corralies if we're not going to fix the tax structure." And the Senate killed our greed. So I have to be fair, in full disclosure, we looked at other alternatives outside of HB 441, but we do have the courage to propose something which, you know, like I said, saying no, or complaining without a solution is white, and you can make this determination on whether the senators are, like, why.
And I felt it was very important that our schools have counselors for suicide, counselors for nurses, and we funded that for really the first time ever because of the excess money we had.
Senator, I'm sorry I brought that up.
Thanks for being here. Just to remind you, we're planning on one the third Wednesday in June. Casey's going to take it, and he's going to talk about what concerns- Casey's going to take it and he's going to talk about what concerns should we have and what can we do to prevent fires in our forests. If you were around and paying attention last year, Spanish Fort, Southern Utah County was torn up with fires. Do we really face a risk? What are we doing in Cache County? What's the state doing to help us protect that? Then July, we're going to take a break. My wife's going to take me to Alaska, so I'm going to be gone. In August, we're going to have Senator, Representative Potter is going to take it and we're going to talk about what did we really do with Medicaid expansion? What did we really do with medical marijuana? So you'll have some idea what, I think Ed Redd will be the guy who'll talk all about that. Then in September, we're going to talk about transportation needs. And they say, you want to take the money out of there. Scott, Scott's going to talk about that and I think, we hope to have someone from UDOT talking about some of the other provisions they have because the gasoline tax is shrinking and it's not carrying our load. And I tell you, if you, 1.8 billion dollars for roads is not what we really need. We need a lot more than that for our roads. And if you cut 660 million out of it, you're really going to have a, it's going to be noticed. You're going to see it. Then in, in, in October, Representative Johnson is going to talk about a new program and that's called the Teacher Student Success Program. If you remember, there's a group called Our Schools Now and they lobbied pretty hard in the legislature. Initially, they wanted to increase income tax by, from 5% to 6%, a 1% increase, they said, which is really a 25% increase in your income tax you're paying. And we, they stopped all that. We did some increases in property tax that helped them out because we have some problems in our school districts, unfair property tax. It doesn't really benefit every district the same. But we also put on the ballot, increasing the gasoline tax and it was, it was to raise 100 million dollars for this program. And this program gives, we funded it in the legislature without the tax increase. So the 100 million dollars is going to schools today. Up to 25% of it can be used for teacher salary, either bonuses, merit, whatever you want to do for tap, it can be, doesn't have to be. The other 75, 100, 75 million dollars can be used as a local school building group want to do, much like SITLaland. So if you've been involved in all the schools, we gave, I think 72 million dollars last year, went directly to a school building and that community council, that school building could say, we want computers or we want this or this. So we're going to involve more of the school community or their school to help direct that. So by that time in October, I think Representative Johnson, Dan's going to have a better idea of what actually happened with it and what difference, if any, did it make for schools.
And Senator Si will have, you know, have some more.
That's right. His lambs will be gone.
Your, your particular committee, you might not make it back up here, so where would be the closest one?
We're going to decide tomorrow. And if we don't come back up here, we'll probably do it in Brigham. We'll do it. We can always do it in Maddox. That's what I said.
Thanks for being here.
And Hermoltz and they'll pay for the bill.
We appreciate you being, this is very important. You guys chunged a lot of these. We appreciate it.
Just so that you know, in case you share the story again, you don't keep track of the. You don't keep your data, it doesn't matter if you either pass it or lie here.
That's why we change. Before you did. Chick Bullen got that bill from 1980.
Okay, maybe in 1980. But yeah, we don't, we don't.
Chick Bullen did because he's so funny.
So just so you know, when you tell your story.
Well, I tell it.